Collier, who is playing my wife, Mary Bailey, in it. Give her a big round of applause. And, you know, Georgia, Mary.
On December 17th, we'll call our meeting to order. The first thing we have is gonna be the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. I don't know what I was thinking there. But anybody else, so first we're gonna have our invocation. Bishop Slater, you here? I knew you'd be here. You can be kind of regular at this.
He's gonna start charging.
Shall we pray? Father, we thank you once again for allowing us to come together to do that bidding. Thank you for allowing us to make it through this year. Thank you for even the warnings, even through the weather, even through the conversations. Thank you, Lord, for sparing us and giving us another chance to get things right. Whether we're as a community or whether or not we're politicians, we have an opportunity to give you glory, to give you honor, and to love one another in everything that we do. And, Father, prepare us for what's yet to come for next year. We thank you in advance for what you're getting ready to do. Goldsboro, we thank you for this precious city, God, that you shall put back on the map as a place of people who are blessed and willing to do things together. And unity be the voice going from each end of this county. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
And the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. Next, we have roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor President.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Rogers.
Here.
Councilmember Fox.
Present.
Councilmember Ray.
Here. We're all here. Next, we have our minutes of the work session and rego meeting of November 19, 2018.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All favoriters right hand. Opposed likewise? Minister approves. Okay, so next we have presentations. And I'm gonna tell ya, I've been mayor, going on three, four years. Mayor King was mayor fourteen years or so, and these are probably some of the toughest retirements that we've ever done. And it was so important that Mayor King has even come out here tonight to help us with them, so that's a good thing. But I'm gonna read the first one, and then we'll move on from there. So this is Resolution Express Appreciation for Services rendered by Kay Scott as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than thirty-nine years. Kay retires on January 1, 2019, as Finance Director with the Finance Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than thirty-nine years of service. She began her career on April 9, 1979, as Secretary Two with the Parks and Recreation Department. November 22, 1989, Kay was promoted to Accounting Technician with the Finance Department. Over Kay's vast career with the city, her position has reclassified as Assistant to Accounting Technician to Accounting Specialist and Accounting Services Manager. On August 4, 2004, Kay was promoted to Assistant Finance Director within the Finance Department. August 19, 2008, Kay was promoted to Finance Director, which she has served until retirement. Kay has proven herself to be dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and City Council of the City of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to Kay their deep appreciation and gratitude for her service rendered by her to the city over these years. Therefore, be resolved by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Goldsboro that, number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude to Kay for the dedicated service rendered during her tenure with the City of Goldsboro and offer our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from this the seventeenth day of December 2018. Offer this for adoption.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All favoriters right hand. Resolution's passed. Okay, you know the deal. You can mayor come on up. Mayor King, the floor is yours. I'm sure you have something to say.
Me? I'll let you present first, and I'll talk about it.
All right. Mayor King, it's yours.
What should I say?
Keep it nice.
I will. Let me say this about this young lady. Her real name is Kay, but I call her Moneybag. As the Finance Director for many years, when I came here in 1979, the department did personal safety, I hired this young lady back in...
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine. So she's been my guiding star for all of these years, and I watched her go up the ladder, and she became the Finance Director. And let me tell you, did we get approval. I call her Moneybag. And I'll tell you, as personnel director, I didn't, it didn't bother me too much, but when I became mayor, finance law, that type of stuff, but I knew I had a winner. And we've been very close for all of these years, and we have a pact. She knew that I was getting ready to retire for my third time, and she said, now, you let me know before you retire. I said, don't let me know. I said, well, you let me know. We didn't know who was gonna retire first. So I knew that she was getting close, so I beat her to the draw. I told her, she was one of the first people I told. Kay, I'm hanging it up for the third time, the final time.
Figured it out.
I did. So Kay, on behalf of all of the citizens of this great city and everybody I know, none of them know what you've done. I don't know all of it, and I don't want to all of it, but I can tell you, I know you've done outstanding jobs. And one thing a manager, a leader of an organization is concerned about, an awful lot of things, but not much is more important than money, especially public money. And I knew, I knew, I didn't want to be worried about it. Congratulations and...
Thank you.
...for enjoy your retirement, and if anybody bothers you...
I'll call you.
...call me, and you tell them, please don't make me come up. Congratulations.
I think they're gonna have to say everything. I'm gonna tell you, not here as long as things, and I'm not here as long as...
Not here as long as...
You should say that. I'm here longer. Kay, Kay, ever since she's been at the Finance Department, I think Mayor King would test this, we've not worried about any, her and her team, Kim, and everybody down, they did phenomenal work over there. The only time I ever go there is when somebody complains about their water bill. So when somebody's over there billing, I'll go out and tell you what's this, what can we do to help this other dog. But, I mean, we have a tripway rating, we have great finances there, and it's all because Kay looks after our money and your money probably better than she does her own money. She's done this, I mean, ever since she's been here. I don't ever wanna say anybody's not replaceable, but Kay, as close as they get, does not get replaced. And she has just done phenomenal work. We are gonna miss Kay. We're gonna figure out how to get along now. Bill says, as promised, next year for a little while, she will come out to consult us. We're looking forward to that. We're gonna have a little time with her family, the stuff that she got, but we're gonna be there now. And we know that we need Kay, Kay will come out to tell us, because she would never let this city down. I doubt it, for sure.
This is awesome.
You guys, you like the sun?
You know I do. Scott's not here to shut me off from talking.
You're good. Well, he's not here.
That's right. I can't believe it. It's been four years since I walked in your office and applied for a job, because it's come by very, very fast.
Has it really been that long?
It's been four years. It's been a long time. I'm telling my age now.
You're telling mine.
But I have worked for three mayors, numerous councilmembers, five city managers.
Wow.
So I've worked with some great people. I've worked with a lot of great department heads, wonderful employees of the city, but I've worked with some awesome finance people that made me look good. They're wonderful people, very knowledgeable, so I know that the city's in good hands. I'm not worried about that. I'm gonna miss working with them every day and seeing everybody every day, but I'll be back to visit. But I want to thank my son. My son's here with me tonight.
And?
And my daughter's watching on Facebook, I know she is. And I've got to mention my granddaughter's, Ella, and Georgia, so I could say hi to them. But I've got to thank them, because when I was working late or I was at an event, I was late for a ball game, they were so loving and understanding. So it's been great four years.
Awesome.
And I'm not surprised.
We've got over a hundred years of just history and a hundred years of folks retiring here. This next one's no easier, but I'm gonna read it and start it. Resolution 201882. Resolution Express Appreciation for Service rendered by Nathan Sasser as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than thirty-eight years. Whereas Nathan Sasser retires on January 1, 2019, as Assistant Chief of Operations with the Goldsboro Fire Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than thirty-eight years of service. Nathan began his career on August 20, 1980, as a firefighter with the Goldsboro Fire Department. January 25, 1985, Nathan was promoted to Fire Driver with the Goldsboro Fire Department. They had that big old truck back then that we have today, Nathan, but that's a whole nother. It's our Chief Sasser. On April 27, 1994, Nathan was promoted to Fire Lieutenant with the Goldsboro Fire Department. And I don't know why I'm calling him Nathan, because that don't even sound right. On January 22, 2003, Chief Sasser was promoted to Assistant Chief of Operations within the Goldsboro Fire Department, where he's served until his retirement. Whereas Chief Sasser has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. The mayor and the City Council of the City of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to Nathan Sasser their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, be resolved by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Goldsboro, no comment. Number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude to Chief Sasser for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the City of Goldsboro and offer him our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from this the seventeenth day of December 2018. Offer this for adoption.
Motion to adopt.
Any discussion? All favoriters right hand. Motion carries. All right, Chief, you know the deal. Come on, Mayor. Mayor.
I know. Wow.
Mayor King, you go first.
Well, what shall I say? You know, the fire department, I'm a little long, and I don't wanna go here. But what these guys do, I've watched them. You know, most people with their brain are running, are burning houses, run out of them. These guys run into buildings, and I have watched them, and I'm tired when it's over. Have any of you, all of you, any of you watched them fight a real fire? Do that sometime, and you will have a better, better respect for firefighters. Let me tell you, they're awesome people, and the Sasser boys, how many of you on the trip?
When I was hired, how many?
Yeah, lock, any more of that?
We got one, Frank Sasser.
So he got work to do, he's got to get some more.
He's got more time than I have.
Really? Yes, he does. But anyway, the Sasser boys, fire, we have a fire chief, don't we? What's that? Hey, Chief! I heard about you.
I know, this is all from him, sir.
No, 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 I gotta come by and tell you about these guys that are working for you. But, you know, this guy here, he's a good one, he's leading. I'm not so sure about, we'll talk about it. But let me tell you, as mayor, there are a few things that really, really upset people. Fire's one of them. I don't understand why people get so upset about fires and when they're burning the houses down, they're like, either, and all that kind of shit. People don't like fires. But our fire crew, I'd put them against anybody, and you will find out while you're here, unless, I don't know about the new ones, but the ones that've been here for a long time, let me tell you. And if they're here, I know that old guys wouldn't have left the company if they wanted to. So thank you so much for what you guys do, and your retirement is beloved, and enjoy.
All right, well, as Mayor King said, Chief Sasser is, actually, is really part of the history of the Goldsboro Fire Department, because he's been here through it all, and he has done phenomenal work building this thing. As the mayor said, we have an incredible, incredible fire staff and fire team, a lot of training, and a lot of laundry, and just a really good family. And they have always stuck together when they need to be together, and they've always done our work and the citizens' work when they need to, and like, the mayor says, you know, we never, we don't ever give enough respect when we need it, and then all of a sudden, it's like we want and we need it, and it's just a different meaning. So I just want to thank Chief Sasser for all his years of dedication. I think Goldsboro Fire Department, in his life, in recent work in life, and we're certainly gonna miss him, and certainly gonna miss his professionalism and what he stood for in our fire department. Chief, you want to say?
Well, it's been a relatively short thirty-eight years. I still remember the first day when I came in. Chief Alden Brooks was my first Assistant Chief, and he would not let me go on the first fire call, because he had a room to sit at, and he wanted to make sure I had a paperwork thing. It's been a great career. I've enjoyed it every day, and there's been some prime times, and the department, thanks to the city council and all, has really come forward here the last two, five, six, sixteen years or so. Fire chief, we had in the past, they had a great venue for the fire department, and they got us, caught us, put us up there. Mayor King said I put us up there, so it's been great, and it's time to let the input in. You're all up, you're all here to get over to now.
I think we all understand that. So this is Resolution, I don't know why we did that, what are y'all doing all this at one darn time for? Y'all could've spread this stuff out. This is Resolution 201883. Resolution Express Appreciation for Service rendered by Melissa Johnson as an employee of the City of Goldsboro for more than thirty-five years. Lisa Johnson retires on January 1, 2019, as Assistant Chief for the Training with the Goldsboro Fire Department of the City of Goldsboro with more than thirty-five years of service. Lisa began her career on June 20, 1983, as a firefighter with the Goldsboro Fire Department. January 3, 1996, Lisa was promoted to Fire Engineer with the Goldsboro Fire Department. March 5, 1997, Lisa was promoted to Fire Lieutenant with the Goldsboro Fire Department. January 3, 2000, Lisa was promoted to Assistant Chief of Training with the Goldsboro Fire Department of the City of Goldsboro, where she has served until retirement. Lisa has proven herself to be a dedicated and efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of her fellow workers and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and city council of the City of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the City of Goldsboro of expressing to Lisa Johnson their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by her to the city over these years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Goldsboro, no comment. Number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude to Lisa for the dedicated service rendered during her tenure with the City of Goldsboro and offer her our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in her future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the City of Goldsboro and shall be in full force and effect from and after this, the seventeenth day of December 2018. Offer this for adoption.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All favoriters right hand. Motion carries. Our resolution passes. All right, Lisa, you know the deal.
Congratulations. Lucy's entitled.
And before we get started, I assume that all you nice red-shirted youngsters over here, called the Lisa, with their fire academy, would there be any truth to that? Well, then, very orderly, y'all need to come up here, so we can get a picture of Lisa, okay? So if you would, just start coming this way, while we make our promise, and be polite about it. Mayor King.
Oh, my God. Lisa's one of the first female fighters, firefighters that we have. The very first one was Darlene Prothurs, who was my first female assistant when I came here, but she wanted to, she wanted to fight fires, and I wanted a woman. I wanted a female to break that glass. So Darlene came, and right after Darlene, Lisa came, Darlene came back to first male, and she left. But you're here, this is a great night, I'm still glad that you guys invited me. These are very special people, so thank you, and enjoy your retirement.
Well, I did want to say, and I shouldn't tell this, but I ran into Lisa shopping downtown this Saturday, and it was quite fun to see her. I'm not gonna tell you where she was shopping or what she was buying, but it was a very good experience, but anyway, so I'm sure now that she's retired, she'll have more time for these kind of experiences, so that's good. But Lisa is by far the highest ranking woman in the fire department. You can see how long she's been, it's neat to see a woman in a man's world. I always think that's good, and she's done an awesome job. I put her against any man, anytime, anyplace, I think she can hold her on, and she's done a great job. And I think this fire academy here tonight, all these young folks who are our future, is a testament to what Lisa means to our fire system, to our fire community, and it's very great and pleasing to have y'all out here to support Lisa. I think that's a great thing, and I'm looking forward to all of you, as you do with your career. School's the most important, right? But, you know, giving your career, school's a career, a huge, huge deal. I encourage all of you to do that. So Lisa, you want to comment first? Oh, we ain't got a picture, it's only a career.
Well, it's really been a great career. Walking through the doors of the Goldsboro Fire Department as a twenty-two-year-old who didn't know a thing about fire. I didn't grow up, always wanted to be a firefighter, I just had something in my heart going to help me, and I was able to make a connection with the fire service, and it's been very good rewarding. I've had great teamwork, coworkers, and even these four posts up here, it not happened just because of me, it happened with a lot of hard people. A lot of people put hard work into making it happen, because with the fire department is a team, and I really do appreciate it. I'm gonna miss it, but I'm also looking forward to a new chapter in my life, and spending more time with my husband, and...
Who hasn't been to this, is what I'm wondering.
And also with my daughter, I'm really looking forward to a great retirement.
One of them knows. If I'm not, I know I'm right. You're the first female to retire from a police department.
Yes.
Yes, and you, because I'm back.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Mayor Council, if I may, just one thing, I want, you know, because there are a lot of people here supporting people in uniform, so I would like, if you would indulge me, I would like all, will you indulge me? I don't want to take it. Okay, absolutely. Gal, if you come on up here and get this picture, well, and I want you guys to kind of like pull up here on the side, and all you guys stay there. Come on, let's go. This is gonna be a really good...
He's even on duty. How you doing, sir? How are you? How you doing today? How you doing? Thank you.
Chief Sasser goes. Chief... Oh, yeah! Chief Sasser, you look there.
I know, man, you look there.
Thank you. You're not little boys. You're not little boys, I'm glad to see you.
You're looking great, y'all, go ahead and say that.
A few exceptions.
Thank you for watching.
Thank you, guys. Take care.
I like what. Thank you. Mayor King, where are you going? That's his box, it's Lisa's box.
Did she get a bite?
What, buddy?
Yeah, she got cleaned out, cleaned out the room.
Hey, Captain, make sure they bring back that trophy this year.
So we'll go ahead and move to item E, Z1918, MacArthur Properties.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Item E and Z1918, MacArthur Properties, the property is located on the east side of North Berkeley Boulevard between Holly Road and East New Hope Road. The applicant's requesting a rezoning from R16 Residential to General Business Conditional District. In conjunction with this request, the applicant is requesting a waiver of the site plan requirement. If the rezoning is approved, the owner or developer will be required to have the site plan approved by City Council prior to any future development on the property. The surrounding zoning to the north, you have R16 Residential, O and R1. To the south, you have General Business Conditional District and R16. To the east, R16, and to the west, General Business. The existing use of the property is currently vacant woodland. Currently, there are no plans for development of the property. The applicant believes the marketability of the property would be enhanced if rezoned to General Business Conditional District. As previously noted, a separate site plan review and approval by City Council will be The city's comprehensive land use plan recommends mixed-use and medium-density residential development for the property. City water and sewer are available to serve the property, and the subject area is not located in a special flood hazard area. At this time, there is no action necessary, and the Planning Commission will have a recommendation for Council's meeting on February 4, 2019. The Planning Commission, their next meeting is scheduled for January 22. And here's a picture of the site. Any questions for staff?
Seeing no questions, this is a request from MacArthur Properties to rezon from R16 Residential to General Business GBCD District. So we will open this public here, and would anybody from the public like to speak concerning this? Come up, please, sir. If you would, sir, give the clerk your name and address would be good.
Eric Batztorfer, EDC, O'Long, FDR, 101, Forest Drive.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How y'all doing?
Good evening.
My name is Eric Batztorfer. I am speaking on behalf of myself and my mother, Shelby Batztorfer, the owner of 101 Forest Drive, who has lived at the, at and on the property for forty-nine years. Also speaking for my neighbor, Steve Consento, who lives at 103 Forest Drive, who was unable to be at this meeting. We're very much against the rezoning of property Z1918, MacArthur Properties, east side of North Berkeley Boulevard and between Holly Road and East New Hope Road. Both residential properties, 101 and 103, joins the back of the proposed rezoning property. As far as another commercial property in the area, we don't need or want this. The commercial property beside the rezon change used to be a bank, car lot, and a flower vegetable stand, and has been mostly vacant. The Burger King across from the empty bank has also been empty since closing. There was so much trouble with Burger King, for people trespassing through our yards. There used to be a barbed wire fence between the proposed property change and our yards. They tore down the fence at many places, cut them through, found the trash, bottles in the yards. There's not... the smells they emit would be worse in hot weather, not to mention the noise of the dumpsters being dumped. Depending on businesses, trucks would be heard at all times, many have the large, loud, blaring backup signals and you definitely hear all that inside your house. I ask all of you on the council, do you live beside a commercial business and would you want to? We already have more than enough commercial properties with empty stores, where businesses have closed and have set empty, not to mention what a commercial business would do to the property values. Selling a house would be hard to do, the majority of people do not want to live beside a business. The city goes for Lisa to think about the safety, the well-being of the citizens that live in the area and that would be directly affected. Keep the proposed property R-1619 residential zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Dawn White. I own the property of 1909 North Berkeley Boulevard.
Good evening.
Yes, I agree with this young man. I'm gonna be right across from this property and I agree that it shouldn't be commercial because of, like he said, all the stuff that he said, but my concern is that Matthew came, my house looked like a pure lake and if all this stuff is gonna do, the city's gotta step up and take care of the ditches, the drain, plus the traffic. I don't know how the, is this gonna be a four-lane highway? What the scoop is on this? How much property they're gonna take? It's gonna be worse if you put this into a commercial zoning for Berkeley anyway, especially for my property, Ms. Ducky, I'm speaking for her too, Ms. Strickland. And Tony Barrow owns a house next to me, I'm not sure what his take is on this, but my concern is that if this is gonna be a zone for commercial, the city's gotta step up and take care of the traffic and the ditches and all, because I've been fussing for four years to get the ditch and the drain from, what is it, South Drive, I believe, this coming off of Berkeley between the huge car lot and Ms. Ducky's house. And they finally came after Matthew, after we had a major flood and it cost me $6,000 just to fix mine and my insurance wasn't paid for because of, I don't have flood insurance and I need flood insurance, I gotta think. I bought this house in 1993 and that's the reason why I bought it, because it's a nice neighborhood and of course the traffic wasn't as bad as there is now and you're talking about putting four lanes through there, it's gonna be worse. And then if you put this property or agree on this property to be commercial, it's gonna be worse than that. And with me especially being right across the street, I think the council needs to vote nay on this thing.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? All right, seeing now, we're gonna close this public hearing and we're gonna excuse our hard work in Planning Commission and thank you for all you did this year. I hope you have great holidays. Look forward to having you back next year and certainly you don't have to get up and leave right now if you'd like to stay. You know the deal, you're more than welcome to stay. But we, seriously, we do thank you for what you're doing and to the folks that talked, the Planning Commission heard you, they'll meet in January and I'm sure they'll take your comments under advisement into what their decision they make for their recommendation to us. So, thank you, Planning Commission. All right, next we have item F, which is a public hearing to consider a proposal to provide economic incentives to Alta Foods.
Pursuant to state law, a public hearing is being held on a proposal to provide economic incentives to Alta Foods selling $13,437.50 over a two-year period based on a performance agreement with a $3 million capital investment and creation of 30 full-time jobs by the applicant. In addition to these improvements, we'll expand the city's tax base to increase the abhorrent tax value created as a consequence of capital investment brought into the city. Following the public hearing and depending on comments received, staff recommends council consider adopting a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a performance agreement with Alta Foods LLC for this economic incentive totaling $13,437.50 over a two-year period.
Any questions? All right, this is a public hearing for Alta Foods to consider proposing to provide economic incentives for Alta Foods. Would anybody like to speak? Anybody like to speak? Seeing now, we will close this public hearing and you do have a recommendation to consider adopting the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a performance agreement with Alta Foods.
Move to adopt.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise? Motion carries and we're gonna do the economic except for Alta Foods. Okay, next we have public comment period. This is the time in our meeting where anybody from the public can come up and speak on anything regarding the city for up to three minutes. Anybody would like to speak for up to three minutes, now's your time. Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Hello. Zach Harris. I talked to you guys about a month ago.
How are you?
And, hello. And I have just a question, I don't know if you guys can answer a question or not. I have a question, two comments, and sort of a comment question at the end. Question is, now, I was here in relation to Mr. Bevel's proposal, which I understand you have a letter that he wants to rescind his proposal. The question is, and this comes from several people, can he bring that back again before you guys in the same format? Or is, does that rescind it entirely?
We have that as an item for individual action at the end. No, you keep going, but how about then, we will answer your question.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll answer your question. When, if and when could he bring that back?
That's...
And y'all will be thinking about the answer. Okay, so you go ahead.
Okay. And again, what conditions would that be, I guess? So then my two comments, from me. Comment number one is, and I think I speak for our whole group, our concern would be not that that thing then get, that junkyard then be moved to somebody else's neighborhood and not just ours, but that it not be in anybody's neighborhood. So I think we all want to be clear on that, that the idea is nobody wants a junkyard in their backyard and so, you know, we don't want it to just move somewhere else in the town. So we're not just trying to push that off on somebody else. So that was the comment made. And my other comment was to say thank you to each of you, not, not, we had a group of us that spoke to a bunch of you individually and we appreciate each of you speaking back to, I didn't, I didn't talk to each of you, but the ones of you that I did, I appreciate you responding to me and sometimes in long conversations. And Mayor, I appreciate your comment when we had the initial meeting. As you said, even sometimes sort of a negative experience can bring folks together and I think that's done that and we do appreciate all that you guys have put forward and thinking about this. And then my last thing, it's actually from my wife, she works in Raleigh and so it's kind of a trek for her to come back and forth for this and her kind of question comment was, is there a possibility for stuff like this down the road to be a little bit more transparent so that you don't have one individual causing, in round terms, about 100 individuals to take up several different evenings at Thanksgiving and Christmas time worried about this, which caught all of us unawares as neighbors and church folk and such, and also seemed to catch a lot of you unawares till the week before the event. It just seemed that process, which now has resulted in basically him rescinding everything. My wife's concern was, there was a whole lot of energy expended on a lot of folks' parts that had that been more transparent up front. Gotcha.
Thank you, sir.
There you go.
He's the preacher. We got, we got...
There you go. Three minutes means 40 minutes to preach.
And we're trying to answer your comment, your question, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening.
I'm away from my time, so I don't wanna give you that extra. But the main thing I wanted to say, to come up here, is this is the holiday season and just reminding us to all have a sense of humanity and as leaders in the 5 o'clock meeting, more citizens need to come to the 5 o'clock meeting. You need to hear the thoughts of each individual councilman and how they move. And I wanna say personally, I'd be very appalled and hurt every time, every time, because I don't understand why you all don't understand how to truly help people. Your city is number one in poverty. The majority of your residents here live in poverty, but nobody here seems to understand how to help people in poverty. So if you don't understand, stop running and stop trying to be a leader for a city, you're not really trying to lead. Because we have 20 recreation centers, but we don't have any schools hardly, or learning centers, or after-school programs. So we can let these children play, but we don't educate them. We have money for them to play all day long, but we'll not put a dime into them being educated. But I'm for education. My daddy used to say, talk is cheap, it takes money to buy land. And I see a lot of cheap talk from a lot of you all up here who say you care about people. I do not see your actions prove that. You should look at the voting records. Look at what they vote for and what they don't vote for. Cause you vote for an $11 million building and go play more basketball, more games, that honestly my black community don't need. The last thing my black man needs is another basketball. He needs some education. And if you don't understand that, Mayor, I bought you books that stated this by doctors and psychologists. And so you all don't wanna be educated, obviously. So if you don't, don't run next time, please. Because the majority of this city is in a poverty state of mind and you're selfish state of mind to where I got money to spend on stuff that's not needed, but I got, I don't have money for teachers. Huh? I don't understand the argument. So what I'm gonna say is, the city is not land, it's people. Even the other community, they're tired of you being so worried about commercial businesses and money coming in, you forgot about the people who live in this city. So during this holiday season, since it's about love and Jesus and stuff, and ain't that perfect love? Could you maybe talk to your pastor? Find out what perfect love is? Cause you are not exuding it at all, period. Cause the choices you make, show your colors.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I missed the last city council meeting, but I heard that there was some discussion at that meeting regarding the loss of so many key members of our city staff here and the possible need to consider having a audit, which I share those thoughts. But what I come before you this evening is, I missed that meeting and I decided, well, let me go look at the video on it. And on the city website, we have videos that we present of these meetings. And on our website, we have 250 of them as of this afternoon. The first one starts at February the 2nd, 2010. The last one is on August the 20th, 2018. For the past three months, no videos. So my question is, since we're looking to have transparency around here, why are the videos, have they ceased coming up on the website? Did anybody even realize that they weren't being put up on the website?
I see them on mine, so I don't, I don't know. I've seen them on my Facebook.
They're on Facebook.
Yeah, I've seen them on my Facebook.
I've seen videos missing.
And it's not there.
I've seen videos missing and I addressed that.
And it's the past three months.
Well, we will be sure they get uploaded.
I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? Seeing now, we're gonna close the public comment period and we're gonna move to consent agenda.
Mayor and city council presented for your consideration is items G through O on your consent agenda.
Is there any motion on the consent agenda?
Move to adopt the consent agenda. Items G through O with the exception of item N.
Item N was removed, that's correct.
Item N was removed.
Item N was what?
Item N was moved, that's correct. I didn't mark that on mine. Take your time.
Item N, we didn't remove item N. Item N is who we approved at the last meeting.
Oh, that's the other one.
We removed up in the works there.
So I amend that to items G through O.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Both of them?
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Councilmember Robinson.
No.
Councilmember Foster.
No.
Councilmember Anvil.
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved. Next we have items requiring individual action. CU-12, 18 Dale Bevel. Jennifer?
CU-12, 18 Dale Bevel. The property is located on the eastern west sides of Markham Street between A Street and Hooks River Road. Probably won't go through the entire agenda item, I'm just gonna...
I'm just in favor. Nobody out here can hear you.
I don't think you can hear you, Jennifer.
Okay. Is that better?
Can you talk, can you talk a minute, Jennifer? Just test, test, test.
Test, test.
Can you hear me? Okay, yeah, I think you're gonna have to get that more in front of you.
Okay. At the public hearing held on November the 19th, nine people spoke in opposition of the request citing concerns with appearance, noise, and depreciation of property values regarding the proposal. The applicant and the realtor did speak in favor of the request. The Planning Commission at their meeting held on November the 26th recommended approval of the conditional use permit and the submitted site plan with the requested modifications. If you recall, city council did table the request at the request of the applicant at their December 17th, or for the December 17th meeting, but prior to that, on December the 11th, staff did receive a written request from the applicant formally withdrawing the request for the conditional use permit at this location. So is by motion to accept, or recommendation is by motion accept the withdrawal of the application as requested by the applicant. If you do approve this, that does mean that the applicant cannot move forward with this location with, for six months. After six months, they could come back and request again.
All right, you have a motion or a recommendation.
Motion to accept the withdrawal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to accept the withdrawal, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise, the motion carries. So the withdrawal is accepted. So, sir, to answer your two questions, they cannot, they cannot reapply for this site in any standard than six months. So for six months, they could not reapply. Is that correct? All right, so that's, that's item one. Item two, to your transparency, I'm gonna start and Jennifer and Randy can kind of fill in. The law says, when somebody, anybody can request a rezoning change, right? I mean, there's a process and that's a due process that any citizen, business person, whatever can request. You can request it, anybody can request it. So we can't, we don't control, we don't initiate it, we're, our job is to due process it through the system. And when somebody does do a zoning change, the law says that we have to notify the adjoining property owners and maybe some distances from, which I'm not 100% sure what it is, but they could tell, 100 feet?
100 feet.
So anybody within 100 feet. So that's what, you know, you could say, well, y'all do 500 feet, y'all do, whatever that is, we're doing what the law says we have to do. And, you know, the question is then, where would you stop, right? Do you do, you know, would you do a whole neighborhood? Cause it's very labor intensive. It's all public, I mean, it's all, once it hits the planning, once it hits the planning department, it's public knowledge, public information, so anybody can ask anything they want about it at that time. So I think that, to answer your question, that's our process, right or wrong? We put a sign on the property trying to let people know. We advertise it...
Opposed likewise, the motion carries. So the withdrawal is accepted. So, sir, to answer your two questions, uh, they cannot, they cannot reapply for this site in any standard than six months. So for six months, they could not reapply. Is that correct? All right, so that's, that's item one. Item two, to your transparency, I'm gonna start, and Jennifer and Randy can, can I kind of fill in? The law set, when, when somebody, anybody can request a rezoning change, right? I mean, it's a process, and that's a due process, that any citizen, businessperson, whatever can request. You can request it, anybody can request it. So we can't, we don't control, we don't initiate it, we're, our job is to due process it through the system. And when somebody does do a zoning change, the law says that we have to notify the adjoining property owners and, and maybe some distances from, which I'm not 100% sure what it is, but, but they could tell, 100 feet?
100 feet.
So anybody within 100 feet. So that's what, you know, you could say, well, y'all do 500 feet, y'all do, but, but whatever that is, we're doing what the law says we have to do, and, um, you know, the question is then, where would you stop, right? Do you do, you know, would you do a whole neighborhood? 'Cause it's very labor-intensive. We, it's all public, I mean, it's all, once it hits the planning, once it hits the planning department, it's public knowledge, public information, so anybody can ask anything they want about it at that time. So, so I think that, to, to answer your question, that's our process, right? Or we put a sign on the property, trying to let people know, um, we advertise it, and certainly, we're open to better ways, um, but this is just the way that the law says we do, and we gotta be sure we comply with the law. We try to be very transparent, very, very open with, with this. Um, so I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I, I was not indicating there was anything...
No, and I, and I know you weren't, but...
I was just suggesting...
I just wanted you to know the process.
Maybe, maybe there was a way to change the law that would be more open.
Jennifer, I have a question for you, and maybe you can answer it. Um, I know the realtor initially stated that this particular location didn't need zoning changes, so...
The uses permitted within the I-2 zoning district is just with the approval of a conditional use permit because of the type of use.
So what kind of, so what kind of, um, companies could go there currently with the, with the, with the zoning that's there now?
Um, if it didn't include, well, there could be anything that doesn't include outdoor storage, um, general warehouse-type use, um, but there we, in our zoning code, we have supplemental regulations for specific types of uses, and a recycling center or business is, um, when it requires a conditional use permit.
So, so I think it's really to put, to point out here that when we did our ordinances, I think whoever did our orders figured out that no neighborhood would want a junkyard, or that junkyards would be controversial, right? So that's why they did the conditional use. What the conditional use means, even if it's in the zoning, which this one, which it did, even if it's in the zoning, a junkyard is a conditional use, which means it's gotta get the approval of the city council. So, and did the outside, did outside storage have any effect on this, or not?
No, but, um, it did not. I mean, it still requires additional screenings and requirements within our ordinance, but if someone came in and wanted some type of outdoor use that was not a junkyard storage, it would still come before city council because that required a conditional use permit as well.
I just wanted to make sure no one slid anything through with the current zoning requirements.
So I, I, we appreciate your patience on it. I know it got delayed one time, and, uh, but I feel like y'all are very patient. I hope that out of this, you met a new friend or something, but it is dead, and, you know, I have heard that they've moved on to other property. Don't take that as gospel, 'cause I don't know that, but I have heard that through the, through the grapevine. So hopefully, this won't come back in this form in this neighborhood, right? So we...
We have a, we have a man in favor who's, who's a real estate agent, said we'd like to sell, so probably he wants to...
All right, there you go.
He's very serious about, for a good reason.
All right, thank you, folks. Okay, next we got, um, I think we have one more, um, with city manager's report. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The mayor pro temp oath of office. Y'all about to let me mess that up. Councilmember Broadway, will you go down with Melissa and let her down?
Hey, Jen. Let me get...
Okay, I'll follow you, right?
If you refuse to add to your money...
I'll be on Broadway.
...disown with flair...
Disown with flair.
...that I will support and maintain...
I will support and maintain.
...the constitution and laws...
The constitution and laws.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and the constitution and law...
And the constitution and law.
...that the state of North Carolina...
Of the state of North Carolina.
...is not inconsistent there with...
Not inconsistent there with.
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge.
...the duties of my office...
The duties of my office.
...as mayor pro temp...
As mayor pro temp.
...and the city of Goldsboro...
And the city of Goldsboro.
...North Carolina, so does it all.
All right, now we have city manager's report.
I don't have anything other than wish everyone a happy holiday.
Okay, now we have one more resolution, and Mr. Joiner couldn't be here, but his is no less important, because he's been an employee for the city for 32 years. So Resolution 201884 expresses appreciation for service rendered by Willie Joiner as an employee of the city of Goldsboro for more than 32 years. Willie Joiner retires on January 1, 2019, as a heavy equipment operator with the Public Works Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than 32 years of service. He began his career on December 17, 1986, as a labor two with the Public Works Department. October 7, 1998, Willie was promoted to equipment operator two within the Public Works Department. On July 4, 2018, Willie's position was reclassified as a heavy equipment operator within the Public Works Department, where he has served until his retirement. Willie has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro desires on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, all expressing to Willie Joiner their deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the city of Goldsboro County, number one, we express our deep appreciation and gratitude for dedicated service rendered during Willie's tenure with the city of Goldsboro, and we offer him our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated into the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from this the 17th day of December 2018. Offer this for adoption. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise, resolution passes. All right, uh, now we go to council member comments. Councilmember Williams?
I just wanna wish everyone a happy holiday, and I also wanna, um, challenge you to shop black, um, this holiday season. We have a lot of small, um, businesses that are owned by black, uh, families in this community, however, we never see, um, the dollars that we spend, and this is collectively, it's $1.2 trillion that black Americans spend every year in this economy of the United States, however, they don't see any, it doesn't reflect it when you go in their businesses. So I'm asking each and every one, white, black, Spanish, to go and find a small black business here and support them. It really helps. You can go in and you can spend a dollar, you can spend $2, it helps significantly. So, um, I wanna wish you again a happy holiday, and shop black. I challenge you. Tell 10 of your friends to go to a business they've never been to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Broadway?
Well, I'd like to echo, uh, Councilman Williams' happy holiday for Andy, and I'd also like to thank the employees. This has been quite a year. We've had two storms, all kinds of other weather, our, all of our employees, fire departments, civil, uh, all of our fire departments, our police department, everybody has pulled together, and it's been a hard year, and, uh, I'd just like to thank them, and thank them for what they do every day. That's all I have, sir.
Well, um, just wanna echo the same sentiments, uh, that we wanna say, Mary, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and just be safe this coming year, and try to watch out for each and every one. Um, I don't care what code you are, I don't care what creed you are, I don't even care if you're an elected official, um, just watch out for each other and try to take care of each other, and make sure that we all are around for the next coming year, and we're moving on together, so, there we go.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Rayco?
Uh, just to reiterate, you know, this is the Christmas season, and I wish all of you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, but I also want to remind you, this is also a period of time when traffic gets hectic and you need to pay attention. I think more people during this time of season has shopping on their mind rather than stopping. And, uh, you know, it's also a time of year when, uh, I hate to say it, but thieves decide to get real active. And be sure to lock your cars. If you got packages, lock them up in the trunk. Don't make them visible. And again, have a Merry Christmas.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Folsom?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember?
Just a, a quick note to, uh, thank the citizens of this city for, as Councilman , uh, Broadway said before, having gone through, uh, two serious, uh, incidents this year, uh, we stood strong, uh, some were affected by, others were, uh, not, but we came through it as a community. Uh, we, we are a good community. As you saw tonight, we have some great city employees that support this community, and we will continue to go forward in the year 2019. And I'll just say, as everyone else has said, thank you for, uh, your support to this council, and, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Please, sir.
In, in closing out, I would like to thank the Parks and Rec Department. We had jingle in the park a weekend or so ago. Lot of kids, lot of young activity, lot of old activity in the park for a couple of days. That was great to see Herman Park with so full of people at night, the lights, it was really pretty, so I do appreciate the effort of Parks and Rec. Um, I do wanna say that, uh, tonight, we had probably about 150 years of experience leaving our city, and these were some key people and, and just really, really good folks. We will absolutely continue forward, but I do wanna thank them for all their dedication